Good evening. Well, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 18th, 2014. My name is Rob Garrity. I'm the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my right is my good friend Scott Bugbee. To my left, Jim Lehan, our clerk.
Not your good friend?
Yeah, I was gonna say you. Great friend Jim Lehan and mentor, Jack Hathaway Town Administrator. And tonight, we are joined by Sue Jacobson, who's replacing the sadly not-present Marion Harrington. I would advise folks, both watching and here, that we are being audio and videotaped this evening. Mr. Hathaway, would you read the agenda for tonight?
Happy to. Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 18th, 2014. First item of business, town administration report, including brief review of the budget, annual town meeting warrant, action items, including considering opening the warrant to add zoning and King Philip articles. We have members of the zoning bylaw study committee in attendance tonight to discuss that. Consider allowing the garden club to hold their annual perennial and bake sale on Town Hill. Consider permission to conduct the community day run on Saturday, June 7th. Consider requesting the name of the Route 115 Main Street Roundabout, a request by the historical commission. Consideration of the zoning bylaw study committee appointments. And we have a late addition because of an administrative error, but we did want to have you consider increase in solid waste, electronics disposal fees per recommendation of Director McGee. We have a memo to go along with that. It was intended to be in your packet.
Oops.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Everything?
So, our first... Since we have the ZBSC here tonight, can we... Any objection to skipping ahead to the action items and considering adding the open... opening the warrant?
None at all.
No, good idea.
So, someone should move to open the warrant?
Oh, I move to open the warrant?
Second.
Oh, motions may be seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. The ayes have it. The warrant for annual town meeting is reopened. Would the zoning bylaw study committee care to come up? Come on down. Did you mention the executive session?
I apologize. I did not.
On the second page.
Gentlemen.
Hello.
Hello.
Mr. Nick Davis and Mr. Byron.
Yep.
So, we... You had previously given us some articles, and we had decided we were going to push all the zoning stuff back to fall.
Correct.
Just for consistency's sake. But you have communicated that there might be some things of emergent nature, or at least important to do.
To reconsider.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so why don't you tell us about the two of them?
Okay. The primary issue that the zoning bylaw study committee was anxious about was with regard to medical marijuana treatment overlay district, which we had drafted information on and had created an article, which we submitted, which included the language that is now the control language of the state laws and so forth, excluding dates since dates change. And we were just thinking that since we had the moratorium ending in June of this year, that we might want to consider adding this article now, and we can move and make different changes later if we want. But it would just, in our opinion, be another red flag not in our yard.
Well, it would cover us in case something... There are seven more licenses to be issued, plus there's a number that are under contention, which might be turned down and reopened and reissued. And the town is somewhat vulnerable between June 30th and when the next town meeting would be in the fall, until we enact this or something similar to it. So...
Walter, you say that as if it would be bad to have a medical marijuana facility in town.
I think it would be bad to have it somewhere we don't want it.
Good answer.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I agree with Walter that it would be bad to have it someplace we don't want. Completely agree.
So, one thing is, practically speaking, the state hasn't reopened the license issue. They haven't announced a new round, and they won't before the fall. I mean, they have a big chunk of work to do with these. That's practically speaking. I mean, I had a philosophical objection to putting it back on because we weren't putting any zoning stuff on. But I... It's philosophical, so it could be easily bent.
Well, I think, yeah. Practically, you're probably right, Rob. Practically not. But you could still put a stake in the ground if you think you might have a chance to get one. You know, and if it's not where we want it, that could be an issue. So, I would... I'm for putting it back, you know, even though it's not as clean as we like, putting it back on for this town meeting.
Jim?
Um... The only thing I'm a little concerned about is the very issue as to why we didn't want to put... Or one of the reasons we want to put them on to begin with is that I am... I don't disagree philosophically, but I don't have a high level of comfort, and no disrespect to the committee, I would put myself in this category. I'm concerned that we don't get these right. And... Which is one of the reasons we wanted to defer this till we get the planner on board, and we have someone that can work with these articles, that has the experience that we need to be sure that we've got them right. I'm willing to put them back on because I think philosophically, it's the right thing to do.
And we think we could change them again in the fall to be better.
I suspect you're right.
But then you run the risk. Because some people are thinking we don't know what we're doing, though. A little bit. I mean, frustration.
I mean, they're not that bad.
We're fed.
It's not that it's, you know, just pulled out of the air. I don't mean to imply that, but...
Well, this language was vetted by town council last spring.
I know it was. I know it was.
And with all due respect to our new town planner, whom I happen to think is going to be a terrific addition to the town, the gentleman has not worked in Massachusetts.
See, I can't get entirely worked up about this.
No, I know what kind of...
Even though I really wanted to keep the zoning stuff out.
I spent some time with Mr. Bullock on this, and...
It's the second one, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because when I first read it, it was confusing, to be honest. But I guess I'm a reluctant okay. And I don't mean that in a disrespectful way. I just really would like to... I wish we could wait for all of these. But I do understand, I'm aware of the seven licenses. I know there's at least one lawsuit that I've heard of, probably more over this. So, if we have to fix it in the fall, we'll fix it in the fall.
Like I said, I'm, you know, better safe than sorry. I mean, like I said, we can fix it. But, you know, I think this protects us a little bit.
I guess another way to say it is, I don't see a downside.
But we tried to stay away from having zoning articles in the fall. Would you limit CVSs in this way?
Yeah, yeah.
Too many.
Walgreens.
What'd you limit what?
CVS is expensive.
Marijuana is a normal medicinal drug now. Alright, so is there a motion to put this article on the warrant?
So moved.
I will second.
Moved and made... Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose no. The ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
If you don't mind, we'll stuff that to the end.
Yes.
I don't want to engender a fight about medical marijuana, you know, early on, night one.
I mean, night one. Only night.
There are plenty of other articles that we can fight about.
And you had a second?
We had a question, because we had had a meeting with Bob Bullock regarding the methadone clinic issue, and whether or not that had any sense of priority that needed to be dealt with in any kind of a first stop, not in our backyard kind of attitude. We didn't know. And we didn't know whether there was... Whether it was worth us having any additional follow-up discussions with Bob Bullock to maybe consider whether or not such a use could only be in a certain location type of thing.
Right. And I had expressed an earlier concern about the language that we saw would have made the medical center. Everyone had to go in and get a special permit for each individual doctor's office. So, my personal preference is for you guys to, you know, continue to sharpen your pencils on this one, and do it in a way that...
In the fall, you mean?
Yeah. Again, I don't know for imminent on methadone.
You spoke to Bob, sir?
Jim?
I did.
And did they clarify the issue for you, or?
It's less murky, I guess is a better way to say it. I don't... I mean, if I had a crystal ball, I'd, you know, I'd be picking the numbers for the $400 million lottery tonight.
Right, right.
I mean, I don't see us... I don't see waiting to the fall on that one creating any considerations for the town. That's just a personal opinion, you know. I don't think we need to rush that one.
His secondary anxiety to me was...
And I had the same concern that Rob did in some of the language.
That the new medical building doesn't have all its tenants yet, and is this a possible issue that we should try and... Red flag. That was the only reason that he was seeing it as of different priority. And I said, "Well, I don't know."
I thought they were full. But even then, if you're the landlord, would you want that in there? Because that might detract from other people coming to your thing.
Well, I don't know. I say...
Yeah.
I think it's... The third floor is undesigned yet.
Oh, okay. I thought they always said that when we did the groundbreaking, they pretty much sold out, but...
Well, they have two floors...
Out of three.
Out of three, to my knowledge.
I don't want to come back on this issue again. So, we either decide one way or the other tonight.
What do you mean, between now and town meeting?
I don't want to keep revisiting this. So, I mean, we either decide that we're going to go forward with that one or not, or we forget it.
Yeah, my preference is to have a really good article in the fall.
Mine as well.
Fine.
Done.
Okay.
Thanks, gentlemen.
So, that was the medical marijuana?
No, no, that was methadone.
Methadone.
Marijuana's back in.
Okay.
Marijuana's back in. That's a good way to look at it.
There you go.
It's in.
Smoking light is lit.
You moving to Colorado soon?
Or Seattle. King Philip also had three articles they had sent late.
Yeah, two they had told me about. I have them here.
Now, when I went to King Philip, and I had an assignment that was due, and I passed it in late, I didn't get full credit. So...
You want to dock them? That was partially me. I said, "Try to get one in," because that was for you, Rob. The lighting upgrade, I thought was important.
I just heard about that tonight.
What?
I figured it'd be... I figured the chairman would like that. So, I said, "I'll ask Jack if we can substitute..."
I said, "Is this outside lighting?" And he said, "No."
No, it's inside. You know, it's only at the middle school also. I have a copy. Thank you.
Okay. I figured that'd be right. 241 for inside on the middle school?
Yeah.
Well, that's all LEDs.
Yeah, I think so. LED. They have a whole... I didn't have the presentation.
Holy smokes.
That's the gross cost. It's not the net, because the net cost would be a lot... Because they get credits back. They're getting, I think...
You usually get 25 to 30 cents a kilowatt hour of savings.
Besides that, though, they get something from N-Sars running, like a promotion. They get 100... Oh, no, sorry. 231, 240's net, because it was like 400 or something. I have them. They have them.
Yeah, that's LEDs. Oh, so anyway.
Looking for 80 grand for us?
Yeah.
So, Jack, do you want to talk about that? These three? We'll start with the turf warrant?
Well, they're looking for a million dollars to pay for, in total, to pay for turf fields at King Philip. So, they've done some fundraising. But so, they're looking for us. They're looking for $167,200.
Alright, if they get this money out of the towns, will this close... Will they have enough?
You were at the meeting.
I think so. I think they're about 500. You know, given these numbers, it looks like they're about 500 short. So, yeah.
Right. So, that would be the 33... 33% of 167 would get them to 500,000.
How would we come up with this money?
I think we'd have to borrow unless we want to, you know, take it from the stabilization fund, which I wouldn't recommend at all. You know, we're going to have a hard time paying for any capital other than borrowing, because our free cash is going to go towards the snow and ice deficit.
You got the prison mitigation money.
Yeah. Yeah.
You do. You got one payment there.
We do. We're struggling with the DOR. They're... And I know we've done it in the past. It seems like they change rules every time we talk to them about...
Are they talking about next fiscal year?
Yeah, they want us to wait till the next fiscal year, which...
On last year's... On this year's contribution?
That's not the legislative intent at all.
I know.
I agree. And I... And we've done it in the past, so I'm not really... I don't think... And the auditors are okay with it. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not worried about it. So...
Can our legislators get involved?
Well, or we can just do it.
Or we can just do it.
We've done it in the past.
We've done it in the past, yeah.
We've done it every single... Do you give the money?
We've done it. We've...
Send the bank?
You know, back in the early 2000s, we used to spend the prison mitigation money in the fall before it even came in. So, I mean, it was, you know, we've done it after the fact, before the fact. So, I guess, other than making our town accountant nervous, we could... We do have prison mitigation money.
Well, okay. I don't think we need to find the 167. My opinion is... There's my opinion. We don't need to find the 167 tonight. We don't need to worry about that tonight. This is whether or not we put it on the warrant, let the advisory board consider the financials. We consider financials later, and our thoughts about it, and then move on.
Okay. I think we might just tweak the language a little bit to say, you know, or to borrow. I mean, they say, or otherwise provide, but I would just go through bond council, and we'll tweak that language.
Is that the same as raised, though, or appropriate?
No, it's not.
And it's a different vote.
Yeah.
It'd be a two-thirds vote.
Right.
Okay. This could get interesting, particularly depending on where you put it in the warrant.
Mm-hmm. So, the next one, they're looking for... They have a water problem. So, it says, "To see if the town of Norfolk will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a supplemental sum of $50,160 in order to pay the town share as constituting 33.44% of the total cost of sewer improvement repair project. Said total cost being approximately $150,000 at the King Philip Middle... King Philip Regional Middle School within the King Philip Regional School District, of which the town is a member. Said amounts to be expended in the direction of the King Philip Regional School District School Committee, or to take any other action relative thereto."
Now, Jack, my understanding on that one, this one, before they put a number, was they were going to use E and D funds for this. Is this just a contingency, or they don't want to now use E and D for this? That was what they talked about early on, one of the couple of meetings I've been to.
I know they were trying to use E and D for it, but I...
Because they got an opinion letter. I thought it said it was okay to do that. Maybe they... I don't know what... The full board maybe changed their mind, but I don't remember talking about it.
I think Paul wrote this up in case that the E and D funds...
Need to be used somewhere else.
Were used for somewhere else.
I'm sure they get... I mean, they're under... They need the money everywhere.
How much do they have for E and D?
I want to say 460, maybe, roughly, or something.
We just got the email on that.
We did? I didn't get an email. Lucky dog. He did?
You don't know people.
No, I don't. But, okay. So, this is a... You know, so...
If you want, I'll just read the next one while you're looking.
Sorry.
"To see if the town will vote... The town of Norfolk will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer available funds, or otherwise provide a supplemental sum of $80,701 in order to pay the town share as constituting 33% of the total cost of a lighting expansion project upgrade. Said total cost being approximately $241,330 at the King Philip Regional Middle School within the King Philip Regional District, et cetera, et cetera, to be expended in the direction of the King Philip Regional School District School Committee." They did have an option to combine those two articles, I think, if we... I'd rather keep them. I personally would rather keep them apart.
Keep them apart. And this was a lighting upgrade, you said?
Yeah, I don't have the... Jack, I gave you that piece of...
I think I have it upstairs. I can go grab it if you want.
Sorry. Lighting, some central-type things for the walk-in refrigerators, stuff like that. But the biggest component is the retrofitting of all the lights. And again, they were going to... They have a plan, at least because it's a N-Star and World Energy that kind of N-Star certified to talk about it, or to bid it out, you know, you didn't know them.
Is it under the preferred vendor system?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
And so, like, this is the net cost. So, cost more than that. You get the credits back, and then they have... They can borrow the... You know, KP can't without operation.
She can.
They can borrow the money, and it's already cash flow positive in year one, in the sense of... To me, that's why I thought it was a no-brainer. I mean...
There it is.
It flows like $408 of free cash every month, you know, and some kind of borrowing. So, really, they don't have the authorization to borrow, because it's over 100,000, Paul said, otherwise.
Well, but if they're borrowing, why they need our money?
You got one?
That's what I thought. See, again, he's changed it. Because they can't borrow money. They said they can't borrow money without an article, right? Because they can't do any capital over 100,000 on our town.
Hold on a sec.
But the way they're wording is different than the way I understood they were going to do it.
So, Jack, what do you got on this? You got some paper on this?
No, he wanted the information on the debt.
I wanted the debt.
Yeah.
You know, that one page I gave you, Jack?
I can go get it.
Again, they were supposed to borrow the money. They just don't have permission. You know, they can't borrow money.
Again, we can put this on and discuss the details. I don't want to hold up the whole meeting for this, because if they're cash flow positive, then we're putting the capital out. Of course they're cash flow positive.
No, this wasn't that... Not that way. It wasn't that way. It was borrow them. It was... No, the proposal that World Energy put in front of them, and I looked at, and again, was they, you know, they borrow money, but they can't borrow money. They're not empowered to borrow money, and they can't do it, you know, it's a... Either in or it's a capital project over 100,000, so they have to go to three towns. I didn't want to give them any money.
Exactly. So, what they should be doing is out of their savings. So, World Energy... This is preferred vendor. So, World Energy came up with a series of energy efficiency improvements, the blended paybacks. You do the lighting first, because that, you know, you start instant response on that. The other stuff, the freezer stuff, that takes a little longer. So, anyway, if they said, which is... And we always talk about this, that, oh, this is cash positive when you borrow, because your savings cover your P and I.
Yeah, right.
But if they're not borrowing, okay?
Yeah.
And they're getting the money from us. They have that money that would have covered P and I savings. So, give it back to us.
Right. I think they should borrow it, personally. I don't know why they can't.
Or, your budget request just went down $200,000 because... Or whatever it is. Whatever your annual savings are, your budget request just went down. So... So, or 80 grand less for us. I mean, you know, with the amount of money they asked us, 80 grand is piddly, but still.
I think they should just borrow. I know they're not empowered. I think, to me, it's just cleaner that they just borrow.
I don't understand why they can't borrow. I mean, and I could be wrong. I'm not...
Vote to issue debt from all the towns?
That's what this is kind of... That's the way he explained it, but it's under the...
He's not asking to borrow. He's asking us to pay it.
Yeah, that's different than when I... That's not the way I left the meeting. That was not... I didn't know exactly how it was going to come worded, but...
I mean, they're asking us to pay $357,000 of capital projects.
Right.
And you're absolutely right. I mean, I don't know what the formula is, but they're going to get the benefit. We're going to pay the expense, because we will be cash flow positive on this.
On the lighting?
Yep, absolutely. And I was under the impression the turf thing was all... That that was all going to be through fundraising, outside activities, things of that nature, and that they were not going to be asking the towns.
I think they weren't able to close that, yeah.
Well, I understand. But why can't they borrow? Why are they putting this... I mean, we don't have $357,000 of capital.
I think the three towns could borrow.
We could.
I don't know if you get the other two towns to agree to do that.
Requires all three or two votes?
This doesn't require any votes.
No, 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 no. Well, but...
If we borrow it, you know.
Well, that's a good question.
I think capital... I believe capital requires all three.
Alright, so, what I'm going to say, if we vote yes, and Rentham votes yes, and Plainfield votes no, is it still a deal? Do we pay our share? I don't think we do.
I wouldn't want...
Well, this isn't a borrowing. This is a give-me-money.
But are we bound to that obligation if all three towns don't support it?
I mean, it's... I would argue yes, because it says to pay the town's share. And if the other two towns aren't paying their share, then...
And we're first out of the gate.
Yeah.
I... And you're right. It's not the time to discuss it, but I have a problem with this.
Structure of property. You know, A, I support the turf field, because I think you can make an economic case that the turf field is a maintenance saver. And...
I agree, but they need to take that into account in terms of their operational considerations when they ask for this money. And I don't see any of that.
The sewer piece, you know, you've got to do it. It's like a hole in the roof. So, I don't know how many options there are. I thought, didn't someone screw something up?
Yes.
So, are we chasing down people? Is there liability here to pursue?
I don't... I hadn't heard that. This is... I don't know if you're... I mean, there was a... There was a lot of finger pointing over at the high school sewer project. This is the junior high.
Right, this is the junior high, right.
Yeah. I hadn't heard of any mess-ups at the junior high. I'm not saying there aren't any, but I hadn't heard of them. Alright, this is under the... This is under the small gym?
Yeah, and some classrooms, too, but the wooden floor, I think, yeah. It's under the floor.
And it's going to wreck the floor?
You know, I don't know what the repercussions of it are. I know... I know they say they have the... I'm sure they have the issue. I know it's under the floor. I don't know if it's not fixed. What happens? I don't know the end. Do you know?
No, but I think it also has to do with the water flow, too, right? I mean, the amount of water...
That was a different issue. That was the water line.
But I think they're going to fix... I thought they were going to fix that in this... At the same time, though, too.
Well, so, all of these are capital items. I would feel comfortable asking the town to borrow for these.
You would?
I would. I mean, they're capital. They're long-term capital.
We haven't done capital for King Philip since we built the schools.
Right.
At least not...
But we built the schools how long ago? I mean, we're talking like eight or 10 years now.
It's since I've been here, really. It's until 2003, we haven't really...
The groundbreaking was when I was on the board, so it's been less than 10.
Less than 10. So, but, you know, we're getting to the point with them where it's time to do a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, there was... They were intentionally... This goes back to Dr. Robot's days. They were intentionally holding off on capital because they had the building projects, and they did a lot of capital during the building projects, obviously.
Yeah. But we'll be doing something at that place in 10 years, you know.
And we've been doing it age-old day, you know, when we're painting these buildings.
So, I don't think it's crazy to start considering capital expenses of the buildings.
Well, the only way we could do it is borrow, Rob.
Yeah, we do not have this kind of cash sitting around.
There's no alternative.
Yeah. It didn't snow so much, right?
Our rate's still pretty good, short-term?
Yeah. Yeah, they haven't...
Three, somewhere around there?
I don't know. They haven't doubled, so I'm sure they're in the twos to threes.
That's $300,000 all told.
360?
Yeah.
Oh, 80. I'm sorry. 80, yeah, 130.
Yeah, 80 plus 50 plus 167.
Yeah, 300.
Something, right?
Plus... Well, you've got two 50s. You have 50, 80, 50, 167.
Three requests, right?
Oh, the bottom article is a combined article. Sorry, sorry. So, 300, 307.
300,000, roughly. Alright, so, questions for us. Do we want to mix them all together? You want to mash them together? You want to do them separately? And do you want to just put... Do you want to put them on? I mean, that's the threshold question. Do you want... How do we feel about putting this stuff on the warrant?
Like I said, I have no problem with the cap. I'm still on the lighting one, though. That was not the way they were going to do it. So, I guess, that one I don't. Not if they don't... They can borrow, you know. They can borrow it. We still have to prove it, though, I think, right, Jack? I mean, I don't know the legalities of it, but...
Can the regional district issue notes and bonds without us?
I'm not... The only time they... The only time they've borrowed in the past 15 years is they borrowed...
The school project.
Yeah, for when we've done a debt exclusion for the school project.
Alright. Now, conceivably, you could fit all this, the P and I on all this, under under our two and a half cap, conceivably. So each town could do a, a bond, an issue that isn't a debt exclusion or, or an override.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't make that jump that you were thinking of doing this as a, as an override.
Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't make that jump either. I thought you were talking about included debt.
Yeah, do it as included debt. In each town, but each town doing it as included debt, instead of having the, you know.
I can't imagine you're going to do a three hundred thousand dollar override. I mean, I, I assumed, that's why I was looking at the debt schedule. I assumed you were talking about doing this as included debt.
Yeah, exactly.
What would you borrow, over five years? I mean, that amount, you won't get any longer than five years.
Oh, three hundred grand, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't imagine doing it for 10.
Unless you roll it into another capital item.
Generally, we'd do small numbers like that. We'd do bands, and then we, we have the option of paying them back in one, two, or three years.
You can argue that later on, but.
All right. Well, my suggestion is, why don't we put these three articles as three separate articles on the warrant, and then start, collect our questions for King Philip, and talk to the advisory board about it. And just, just mechanically, let's just get it on the warrant, so we can talk about it, unless people have an objection to even doing that.
I, I don't know. I, I, I'm inclined to think of it as one article, and then argue about the amounts, if you will. I mean, if there's an issue, well, if there's an issue with the lighting, I think that needs to be worked out, because the amounts can change. But if you're going to do this, I mean, we're not, we're not going to borrow for fifty thousand dollars. We're going to have to find it. And so, if, let's just make this leap of faith that they're legitimate considerations. I don't know that you want to put people into a position of picking and choosing and that type of thing. I think I just, this is what they say they need. Let the town decide whether or not they want to support that need. I'm, I'm inclined to go with one article. Just my opinion.
You're King Philip rep?
Tough, like you said, because it doesn't let the constituents come out in force, and, you know, the turf people versus the.
Well, that's what, that's honestly what I'm afraid of.
No, I know what you mean.
Is it becomes, you know, a personal crusade for a particular issue. And, and I, I agree with you. You know, the turf feels, it'd be a good thing and all, I mean, no argument there. But, you know, is it any more or less important than the others? Otherwise, they wouldn't, they shouldn't be here.
Hmm.
I mean, to me, the, you know, if you had to pick one, and you've got a problem with your sewer system.
That's a no-brainer.
That kind of leaps to the top of the list for me.
To me, the lighting is a good thing to do, just, you know.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, energy-wise, it's a cash flow.
And you save money. It's a cash flow winner.
So that was not, but you know, you could put it off, like we do here. Unfortunately, you keep putting it off forever.
But the emotions, the emotions will reverse that order.
Right, yeah. You know, like you said, if you have a water sanitary problem, you should fix that no matter what.
I don't know. I mean, if it's to the extent that they say it is, and I'm sure it is, you don't have a choice.
And it would be one joint King Philip capital article.
Yeah, that's kind of my view. I, I, the picking and choosing kind of concerns me on this one.
Yeah, divide and conquer. And if you throw them together, there's more chance.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's me, because if, if the divide and conquer people want to get it passed, that enough, they just see enough people.
Well, there'll be some emotion over the first one. And, and the other, and the other two, to me, are equally, if not more, important.
Right. And highly defensible.
Yeah.
Come on, folks, we have sewer problems. One is to make money, spend money to make money. That's the way I look at the lighting.
What do you think?
One is a must fix, somewhere down.
No opinion?
The other one is something they should have anyways.
Exactly, yeah.
Put it in one, put it in one, that, you know, each consider, each, each of these people bring the people to the town meeting.
I don't have a, this isn't a passion feeling, but I, I just, to me, it makes more sense to do one.
My reaction is to keep them separate, just till they can argue about each one, rather than.
They'll all fall alone. We must hang together. We'll all certainly hang separately.
I, I think traditionally, we have more success when we put things together.
We want success.
It's not, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just, my, my first reaction is it makes more sense to put them together. But whatever the pleasure.
Is there a motion to divide the question in town meeting? I know there is, and certain parliamentary procedures.
I don't recall reading that.
I don't think we've ever done that.
No. And I don't recall hearing it in any of.
Of course, we're going to have a new moderator, so one never knows.
You never know. We should ask them their opinions.
We're going to have a new moderator.
Well, I'm, I'm done, so let's keep them combined.
Okay. So there's a motion made to combine them and place them on the warrant.
I'll second.
Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Jack, you can't vote. The ayes have it. It's on there.
Can if you want.
Do express our concern. And it would be great if Michael and/or Wendy, Wendy and/or Michael, you know, could come and talk about this and be staunch.
Michael wasn't on the finance. Wendy would be the perfect person.
Yeah, do you want to?
She chairs the finance committee, budget finance committee, subcommittee.
They, they're not scheduled yet, but they will be coming to the advisory committee. Do you want to just gang up on them there, or do you want them to come up?
Well, I know they're going to Rentham at the end of March. March 26th, 26th. I think it's the same, it's the same night that.
Twenty-fourth, I thought.
She told me it was the 26th, but.
Okay, I could be wrong. I thought it was the 24th.
Whatever. It's not our meeting, so whenever they want to go, it's okay.
All right, well, we'll, we'll talk to them when they come to the.
These might have been in April. We're not doing much in April.
I want to have three or four meetings in April.
I knew that was coming. I knew that was coming.
All right, folks. Consider allowing the garden club to hold their annual perennial and bake sale on Town Hill and Vanstand on Saturday, May 17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, although is there any discussion about the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The ayes have it. Consider permission to conduct the community day run on Saturday, June 7.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded.
You got it right. You did, no.
Is there any discussion on the item? Chuck's okay with the route?
He is, and this is, this is run that's in the memory of Taylor Manning. They're raising money to, for Camp Jewel, a cause close to the Manning family.
Very nice. So, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The ayes have it.
We skip the next one if.
There's a strong desire to do the next one.
There is.
Never mind.
So, consider zoning bylaw study committee appointments. We have, how many appointments, Jack?
Two. We, we, selectmen have three. You've made one, Mr. Weddleton. There are two members participating as expired appointees.
And who's that?
Mr. Bauer and Mr. Nicodemus.
Oh, okay. Is there any discussion on the appointments?
Uh, yes. I, I, with a planner coming on board, I, I would like to see us have a member of this board involved, at least initially, with the zoning bylaw study committee. With the plan, I'd, I'd suggest that perhaps we also appoint Jack.
Not yet, not yet.
Huh?
The chairman of the planning board just was coming in here. And he doesn't get to sit in this seat until.
You two got something going that?
Chairman is Steve. Oh, it's Steve, I'm sorry.
I would, I would like to recommend that we appoint a member of this board and Mr. Hathaway as our two appointees, with Mr. Hathaway's position being replaced by the planner once he's on board. And it may very well be that whichever member, you're going off, so whether it's Mr. Bugby or I, that we're only on there for a short period of time, if you will, for a transitional period, perhaps through the fall town meeting, with the planner, to work with the planner. I think it's important that this board be involved in that process. I appreciate the work that, that folks have done on that. There is a representative already from the planning board, I believe. Mr. McLean.
Mr. McLean.
Is a representative. So I, you know, I think we don't need two representatives from the planning board on that at this particular point in time. And I, I just think we need to, with the planner coming on board, I think that's an advisable way to go, in my opinion. So, and I have no druthers, whether it's Mr. Bugby or myself, that, that's, whatever.
So we want to have, so the planner will be a.
Well, I think temporarily, I, I would, I would recommend that we appoint Mr. Hathaway and either you or I, Mr. Bugby, to that, as our two appointments to that committee. And that, once the planner's on board, in another meeting, we can appoint him in to replace Jack. And then I would suggest probably after the fall town meeting, we've, hopefully we'll have another candidate to replace either you or I. But I, I think that transitional period.
Do we keep that as a, from our board going forward, then, too, you know?
We might. It might, it might be something, you know, that's a discussion for the future.
I think you might want to consider making the planner an ex officio.
Could do that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, could do that, too.
You know what? I'm actually going to sit this one out. I have feelings about this that, and I'm not going to be on the board.
Could appoint you then.
Coming past, going past May.
That's fair.
So, you know, I, I'm going to sit this one out. I would generally caution against selectmen getting involved in too many other boards, but you guys got the bandwidth? Good on you. My preference would be to widen the loop and have new people, but.
Well, I, I think that's the intent, but we don't have people beating down the door to do it, unfortunately, right now. And I'm, I'm hoping when the planner comes on, that, that we'll have some folks that will choose to get involved and that come with, with a, you know, a nice independent view.
Actually, it's an interesting philosophical question. I was thinking about this. The ZBSC is, I don't know if that is a starter board, you know? I don't know if the ZB should be a starter board. It's, it's, there are a couple of boards that you don't want people, frankly, who've never sat in anything before.
Agreed. You want someone that has some basic knowledge.
Yeah. So it's, it's a tough balance to get, and he's not, and, or her, he or she is not involved in six other boards.
It'd be good to get somebody who's like a former selectman and former ZBA member. I can't think of anybody like that.
Can't think of anyone who would want to do that. So.
It doesn't meet that, they don't meet that often, though, right? I mean, I'm not.
No, and, and their busiest time is going to be in the fall.
Right.
You know, when we get to the fall town meeting. I mean, there's not much that's going to go on now. I mean, we're pretty much, they're pretty much done for this meeting. So the issue really is for the fall, but we have expired terms, and I think it's, you know, it's time to move that on.
So, there is some, there is some discussion among the current members, that some of the more active, current new members, that they'd like to have a monthly meeting all year round, you know?
It's probably not a bad idea.
And be, just be productive, not try and scramble at the last minute.
Scott, do you have a preference?
Well, I definitely like the idea of getting the planner involved, you know, either ex officio or as a member. And like, to Rob's point, I mean, new people would be, finding new people would be great, but we tried to cast it there. We've had no volunteers. I mean, I think, I mean, I have no, I mean, I have bandwidth, and I'd be more than happy to serve on that. I mean, I, you know, I'm interested in the, you know, what's best for the town in terms of zoning, or how do we, how do we fit the way we want Norfolk to look, and what we want it to do. At the same time, I don't, you know, have any ties to building trade or anything like that. So it's really just.
Well, neither you nor I do.
You know, I mean, just, I mean, I look at that, you know, it's just, but then again, I don't have the expertise of some of these people on the board either, but.
How you feel about medical marijuana?
In the right place at the right time, not a problem at all. Yeah, right? I just don't want to, I guess can't go near the schools anyway, so I, you know.
So, actually, so I'll make a motion to appoint.
I'm just checking.
Just checking.
Okay.
Are you?
I'm fine.
Are you fighting for the position?
Nope, nope.
All right. So I, I make a motion to appoint Scott Bugby and the new planner as the members to fill the unexpired terms.
I will second.
Expired terms.
I will second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
So those will, those are scheduled to expire in December. Those are the only appointments that we have that go through December.
Does December pass?
No, next December.
You've already expired.
You're on and off in the same evening. Not bad, Scott.
I just put that in my resume.
I think you should rethink that appointment quickly.
Would you send notes of thank you to the?
Yes, I was going to suggest that.
Off-going members?
Oh, where's your to-do list? Marion always has a to-do list.
It's in my, it's in my log.
You usually have the to-do list, and it's yellow or pink or something.
It's usually handed to me.
Scott, Scott's already taking notes. He's planning on doing it.
Mr. Scott Bragdon, our HR director, has joined us. And I think we just had an anniversary, didn't we? Didn't your fifth?
LinkedIn.
Yeah, LinkedIn said you joined five years ago, and I was like, I, really? Did time fly?
He served on a volunteer basis.
Oh, so he was fluffing his LinkedIn resume.
About two years. I think he's been about here three years.
I don't think they'll take it for pension purpose.
Yeah, this doesn't count for pension.
Well, there are some places you probably qualify.
Depending on the quality work I got out of my bottom lunch once a year.
So, well, so your future prospective employer should know you lie on resumes regularly.
No, LinkedIn, just LinkedIn.
Just LinkedIn. Okay. All right. Well, yes, I am king of, I am on LinkedIn, so there you go.
Have you been trying, you've been, and you, I've been meaning to contact you about that deal that we're supposed to, you can send me like fifteen million dollars, and then we'll.
Oh, that?
Yeah.
Yeah, my, your dead cousin.
Something like.
I am curious, though. When you, when you said you were going to remove yourself from the discussion, then you ended up making the motion. I was just curious how that works.
Well, since you guys were just, you know, whittling around.
I didn't say you were his mentor.
So, somebody had to get.
Good point. Yeah, good point. All right. Case well taken.
Trying to go home tonight.
I withdraw the statement.
Rob, you missed my best line of the night.
He did. He did. You missed, you missed his best line of the night. Yeah.
All right. I request to name 115 Main Street Roundabout, the Ware Circle, and the Roundabout near Liberty Lane, Avery Circle, for recommendations to store commission. I actually saw, I thought I saw Ms. Bartholomew here tonight. Did I see her out in the parking lot? Is she, was she planning to come?
Not, not that I know of. I didn't see her. But they did provide.
They, she wrote a nice letter.
Yes, I've seen the letter with.
This letter?
Pictures, details. Yes, illustrations.
Yeah.
Didn't we name the, there wasn't a sign in the Roundabout a long time ago? Not a long time ago.
The selectmen voted to name it for a year.
That was a one-year donation that we did for NCL, which.
Whatever.
It was just a year.
We'll ever do again.
It was a.
I think it was thoughtful.
Well, I, I can tell you, I, I know the history of the warehouse because, or the Ware family, because it involved a parsonage that's over there as well, which was originally one of the Ware homes. Goes back into the 1700s, actually, even though the thing says. It, it certainly reflects our history. And I, I'm one that thinks that's a good thing.
And the Ware Lands is right down the street from me.
Yeah, I think that's a, I'm all for remembering our past, but I think it's a good thing.
So, but Avery.
It goes by quickly.
I missed, if, if we got a letter on the Avery Circle, I, I missed it entirely.
I think it's just this. I think it's just including.
I only saw the one on this, on the Ware.
It's at the, it's at the bottom of the one with the.
After David, no.
Oh, yes, I, I'm sorry.
Turning our attention now?
The other Roundabout was named Avery Square after the, meaning the one, the outbound one, if you're going towards Rentham. That one right there?
Right.
With the clock?
Hours, yeah.
Hmm.
Well, it's the town hall, right?
What's, what's the historic connection of Reverend Avery?
Was he the, I think he was the original pastor.
Yeah.
I think he was the original pastor when, the town was founded when the church in Rentham broke and came to what was then known as North Rentham. And I believe he was the original pastor. And historically.
We're like the Northern Ireland of Southern Norfolk County.
But the interesting part about it is, is that we found the document of, that was submitted. I think I remember, I shared this with you. And the original di, I think it was two hundred and forty-five dollars, I may be off a buck, to file with the state to get the town certified. And there was some interesting names on that document that still are here to this day. But Avery was the, I think he was the pastor.
Jim signed it.
I signed it?
He was seventeen at the time.
You're pushing it.
Nobody's watching, man.
Why, has March Madness started already? Yes, it has. But anyway, there, there's quite a bit of, of history to that name in the town. But anyway, there's quite a bit of history to that name in the town.
Oh, Marion signed it.
Marion's, oh, oh, put that in the minutes. Put that in the minutes.
It was already named, it says in this letter.
She doesn't live in town, so she can't be watching this on cable.
She might be visiting, she knows everybody.
No, that's true, she does.
She's related to that home.
I will make the motion to approve the recommendation to name the two circles accordingly.
Do we have to go to town meeting with this? Could you do on street namings? Do we, no, this is just, we can do this?
You guys vote street names.
We vote street names.
Yeah, but doesn't it go to?
No, only to accept.
Street acceptance.
Only accept.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded for Ware and Avery Circles. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
Any other discussion?
No, no discussion, we've discussed it before.
I mean, Barbara does a phenomenal job, I mean, she is just an incredible historian for the town.
I'll just get myself a more.
Absolutely amazing.
There is, I was just gonna.
We're gonna have to name something Bartholomew Circle, something.
There is a.
Only have two circles.
Well, I thought we were working on a bigger roundabout.
There's a plaque for Reverend Avery, Avery at Avery Square, or Avery Intersection now, there is a plaque there for the Reverend.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
That's good.
Okay.
Consider increase in solid, well, you know, we can't name everything, because we had to save stuff for us. So in fifty years, you know.
Yeah.
Garrity Clock at Avery Square.
You'll be the dispenser, but don't worry. I don't think, I don't think we've named the access road yet.
Actually, I used to.
Garrity Way.
There are two towns in Massachusetts named after me, Marblehead and Appal. There's, actually the. Sorry. Two meetings left, folks!
Don't miss it, we'll.
Don't miss them!
We're here till Thursday.
You never know what's gonna happen. Tip your waitress. I used to joke actually when I was on the zoning board, when we did the, when we did the comprehensive permit for the Borelli property, those trees, that scraggly line of pine trees that line the edge of the cliff, we explicitly wrote in that he has to save that, because he was cutting down every single tree he could get his hands on, and we put it in the permit, you can't cut those trees down, and we used jokingly say that that was Garrity's Grove, you know, those are my trees, so now they're ugly and they'll probably fall over and hit some car someday, but, you know, we got a few trees at least.
Named after yourself.
Good for you. Alright, it was jokingly, of course. Alright, we have another, a late-breaking item, which for purposes of emergency must be put on.
We did, didn't you hand me the memo? Mary never hands me the memo, because I'll lose it.
Okay, I did hand it to you and you passed it along, but. Okay, I gotta get all these little things straight.
I must, is it the weather, food?
It's almost a full moon.
Why don't, why don't we close this meeting and start over?
Yeah, or pick it up at a horse and carriage or.
Goodness gracious.
What's another place?
So there are.
Here, do you want this?
Oh, thank you.
I have two of them for some reason.
I already had, I already have one.
Yeah, give Jack, we got Jacks.
Thank you.
Do you have one for the records?
I do have one.
Excellent.
You have two?
Nope, just one.
Alright, whatever.
I have one.
So there is a memo there, do you want me to read it, or do you want to read it to yourselves?
For, for the edification of those watching at home.
So it's been brought to the department's attention that Norfolk Electronics disposal vendor is expecting an increase in the cost of disposing CRTs in electronics, the increase equates to approximately four cents per pound, fees are calculated using average product weight chart, we are proposing to increase in fees for all CRTs in electronics accepted at the recycling transfer station to offset the increased cost for disposal. Fiscal two thousand and eleven was the last time adjustments were made to this fee schedule, for your reference, we've attached a list of electronic items with current costs and proposed increases, with your approval, we would like to impose these increases to begin April two thousand and fourteen, which coincides with the time Norfolk will begin accepting household hazardous waste at the facility with residents and communities participating in the Charles River Household Hazardous Waste Consortium, which is thirteen towns, thirteen towns that, it's a regional activity where you can bring your hazardous waste to other towns depending on the day that you want to do it, so.
Really?
We all try and help each other out.
And the price is the same every time you go, do you think?
Correct.
So these, so these proposed fees will all be the same whether I bring my TV or whatever to anyone in sixteen towns?
Correct, and then.
Yeah, but how are they gonna get in if they don't have a sticker?
Um, I believe there's a, I don't know the answer to that.
You know, license maybe?
So we gotta have a guy at the front?
There's usually not a guy at the front, that's the.
Well, there isn't, so these people just.
They can come in.
It's gonna be rampant.
Hey.
But is this cost, is this?
There's not a lot of people that come in, but there are a few, there are a few.
And the, and the, these fees, is it, are they at a break-even level, is there a profit margin, I mean, you know, do we really care if a lot of people kind of, if we charge, say, thirteen dollars for a twenty-one inch monitor, are we losing money, making money, you know, just covering our costs?
We just try and cover our costs.
Why is there a price difference between sixteen and twenty-one?
I think it's due to weight, right, because it's weight-driven.
That wouldn't be true, because you could have some of the old monitors.
Like, I'm just saying.
Exactly.
That are twelve-inch, you know.
My twenty-six inch LED TV weighs like four pounds, my twenty-six inch TV downstairs weighs like eighty pounds. This is not fair.
Well, I don't think this is well thought out at all. Well, it should be, it's, yeah, because the front page of the memo says all per pound, so I don't know how to do, but they don't have a weighing scale, right, I assume they don't want to get into that business?
The weight may have absolutely nothing to do with the size.
But, yeah, but how else can you do it?
Well, but you'd, I don't know, I have a problem with, are you gonna sit there with a tape measure and tell the difference between a sixteen inch and a seventeen inch? I mean, it's ridiculous.
We don't get a lot of sixteen inch TVs coming in, but those are, those are computer monitors.
For example, I, I mean.
So do you want us to take them for free?
No, no, I'm, I'm asking why you have a price differential that is, if you bring in a sixteen inch computer, it's six bucks, if you bring in an eighteen inch computer, it's twice as expensive, and it can't be by weight, because if you're bringing an old one in, I mean, I've got an old one down in my basement, the thing probably weighs, I don't know, you know, it certainly weighs a lot more than a flatscreen.
They're sort of averaging here.
So I, I just.
How often do you turn in a TV?
I just don't understand why we don't have a single fee for computer monitors, and let it go at that.
What about an Apple Mac that has an integrated monitor? Is that a computer or a monitor?
I'm gonna guess that's a computer.
With the monitors, it's, it's twelve dollars.
See, this is because you brought this up late, Jack.
See, I don't think we can, we can't really account for every different type of situation, so these are just kind of to try and put some order.
I understand, but I, I just, I, I find, I see no logic in charging someone six bucks for a sixteen inch and someone thirteen bucks for an eighteen inch.
But I think the point is that these are the same fees charged in the other thirteen towns.
That doesn't make it, that doesn't make it right.
Right, but what?
But we don't want to be like the, you know, if we, we say two dollars, everyone's gonna come to us and flood us with money.
No, I, I'm not suggesting that, but, but there's, we know how much it costs us to dispose of it, I assume, I mean, that, is that illogical to assume?
If we start over and just back into like.
Because then it's by weight, because we, we put them all in a big truck, we weigh the truck and they're.
Okay. So we're making an assumption that an eighteen inch weighs twice as much as a sixteen inch.
So are we paying for the truck's weight too?
On average, Jack, if. Can I ask a question? Do we have any sense, Jack, of, all the time we've done this dispose of these, kind of, these all waste type stuff, are we, are we losing a lot of money, make, you know, breaking evens, you know? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, because like you said, we throw it all in a big truck, so there's no way to know whether it was a seventeen inch TV, eighteen inch TV, twenty-seven, it's all based on weight, and you could have, you know.
Yeah, I mean, do I know line item by line item, are we making money?
Overall, I mean, because we must have a line item for CRT and electronics disposal, or maybe we don't.
Correct, we do.
And then we have an offsetting line for fees taken in for that, what is, is it right exact? Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, no, we have a revenue line for, for items that we go in and, well, this wouldn't be a revenue, this is a.
It's covered by stickers and dump stickers. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have the sticker fees and then the miscellaneous fees, which of this would fall under the.
And you pay, you know, for the big bulk good, like I must have got rid of five hundred pounds of crap the other day and paid a pretty penny for, to do it, but, you know.
Mattresses, now mattresses.
Thirty bucks.
I'm not sure they should be by weight, they should probably be by size.
Cast iron's free.
So some of the old mattresses are pretty heavy.
I, I think the perfect is the enemy of the good here, and perhaps we should live with this, so I will, I will make a chairman's prerogative to make a motion to accept the proposed fee schedule, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, motion is made and seconded, further discussion?
I don't agree with him. I, I think, I, I know it's a Mickey Mouse thing, but I, I just, they're illogical to me, and, and I just don't see the, the logic of this fee schedule.
But you didn't have a, probably, it's been around since two thousand and eleven, so what about?
I don't ever remember seeing it.
Okay, alright, yeah.
That's an honest answer, I don't ever remember seeing it.
So like as Rob said.
Would you prefer to hold this item till Mr. McGee could come in and talk about, talk to it?
I, I'd, I'd just like to understand how.
Did you go see if Bob's over the planning board?
I mean, you know, I, I don't mean to be a pain in this, but I've, I find, I, I don't understand how you're gonna deal with a sixteen inch monitor and an eighteen inch monitor and charge somebody twice as much.
I think they just take the fade, the guy, the guy, I've seen the guy there on Saturday, he'd say, hey, he goes, you got a monitor.
One thing we need to do is we need to post the fee schedule on someplace that is visible to people, because.
It's on the doors, isn't it like a door, something like that?
They do, they have, they, the bulk goods, they definitely have it.
And it's just, you know, it's, I, I trust people to be respectful, like seventeen and sixteen.
It'd be a pain, I just don't get it.
You know, they want to scam two dollars.
You know, and I'll, I'll kid you aside, I understand your point, I just.
I mean, I, I don't.
We could ask Mr. McGee to go back to the Charles River Household Hazardous Waste Consortium and, and make an argument that just express our concern.
I just don't think it's fair, I, I just, you know, our fees should have some element of fairness to them, I just don't think it's fair to charge someone for an eighteen inch monitor twice as much as someone for a sixteen inch monitor, and I want to know who's gonna measure it.
That is a rather arbitrary jump, it really does jump for those, you know.
You're talking about thirteen dollars versus six dollars, it's not like we're talking about five hundred dollars versus.
It's still doubled, it's still doubled for whatever, as soon as, at that point, two inches to double.
You'd save a dollar.
He's what?
He's on camera with the planning board.
So if you have a twenty inch monitor and you're breaking into two tens, it costs a buck less.
Let's, let's not get ridiculous, I just, I just, I find, I find the fee schedule not very fair.
Mr. Bugbee, would you like to hold this item?
I just didn't know if we hold up what he needs, Bob needs to do, because again, we, whether we saw it or not, we should have complained here, and we should have complained, not complained, asked two dollars less, right?
But Scott, you, you know, I mean, a twenty-seven, if it's by weight, which I am sure it is, a twenty-seven inch flatscreen weighs nothing. Okay, nothing. An eighteen inch old timer, as you've pointed out, weighs a lot.
Weighs more, gives you a hernia.
You know, and, and if you've got one of the old projection things, it takes four people to get it out of the truck.
That's fifty anyways.
So, you know, I, I just, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I mean, again, it would be a pain, because we, it would be labor-intensive, but the ideal way to fix all is just have a scale and your weight, and just charge, you don't call anything, just.
Well, how, how big can a computer monitor, I mean, have you ever seen a computer, I mean, that a person, I mean, I've seen them in other areas, but, you know, the largest you're gonna see is twenty-four, twenty-six inch, something like that, at best, so why not just have one flat fee? Or computer monitors, just one flat fee, that's reasonable. Why?
It's not fair to the guy who has the small monitor.
Right, so unless you, which, well, depends.
I'm using your logic.
No, yeah, depends where you go, if you go like, you say everything, every monitor is thirteen, or if you, like, Jackson, then you get, the little guy's gonna be bummed, you just say every monitor is six, I think, let's not talk about this, I don't know why.
It is definitely one of those nights.
Alright, so, is, is, is Bob aware that we have questions for him? Okay.
If he's smart, he'll stay in there till ten thirty.
That's such an issue, but.
Can we just table this for now?
We do have some time, let's table this for now, we have the town administrator reports yet to go, I'm so glad that we're all in such a great mood when you have your town administrator report to give, Mr. Hathaway.
Sure, you don't want to talk about your presentation first?
What presentation?
Well, it's in the warrant thing, so, you know.
But I didn't know we were doing presentations today.
Well, I like to keep people on toes.
But it's point, counterpoint, and I didn't have a chance to bring my counterpoint.
There's no counterpoint necessary.
Or allowed, it sounds like the chairman's prerogative, it sounds like not allowed.
I just was prepared if we're gonna get into a discussion on certain articles.
First, I'd just like to apologize to Mr. Bragden, because I texted him that the meeting was moving along quickly and he should come early, because he's coming into the executive session, and apparently we hit a snag.
A bump in the road, a computer monitor in the road.
So the budget review, I, I don't, we received the budget from King Philip today, which I handed out to you on the sticks, I do have a hard copy upstairs if anybody wants to just review the hard copy. I talked to Rentham and Plainville, actually, I just talked to Plainville today, Rentham, Rentham Carlton Sec. Today about what they're, where they're going with their budget, and it's still too early in their process, so there's no guidance from Plainville yet, he did say that he's, he's having a, you know, he's starting to put, craft his budget, and he's having a very difficult time with the size of the request. One thing that I had intended to try and do over the last two days and I haven't done yet is just kind of look at the last few years and look at our total rev, new revenue each year, and then look at.
Percentage of that.
The percentages and where it's, not just for school, but where it's gone everywhere, and we've used, you know, we, you know, even last year, we used some of our reserves to pay for the budget, so we've overs, you know, spent more than our new revenue. So the budget is still about nine hundred thousand dollars in the hole, we did receive the resolution from the legislature that they increased the unrestricted government aid by twenty-five million dollars, which translates to twenty-three thousand dollars for us. So, that was.
Two lights.
That was a lot, that was a lot less than I was hoping.
Couple CRTs.
Five yards.
A couple monitors, I think we can cover the monitors now, and table the whole thing.
Moving my along.
So that was disappointing, I was hoping, I was hoping the state was gonna step up more, so, I was kind of waiting for that to.
Certainly led us to believe that at the meeting.
They did. Education aid is still flat as compared to the governor's budget, which is up twenty-five dollars per student from the previous year, and not a lot of change in the rest of the, the state aid, so I'm gonna try and knock the budget down some more, I am going to the advisory board next Wednesday, so I don't know if you, I know Mr. Leehan's expressed interest in going to that, if you want, I'll post you guys for that meeting, we can talk about that when you look at your calendars.
Is it next week or the week after?
It's next Wednesday, which is the twenty-sixth.
No, next Wednesday, is next Wednesday the twenty-sixth?
Yep.
Okay. I was planning on going.
They are gonna talk about the DPW budget tomorrow night at the advisory board, so if you want to talk about CRTs or anything else.
This would be the time?
That would be the time.
I'll make a guest appearance, right, no, I think I'll stay out of it.
So I, I don't have a lot more on the budget tonight, if you want to talk about, I think it would be good if we could number the warrant, I do have three clean copies.
There's no objection, I'd like to go into a brief recess?
Sure.
Okay, let's go. So numbering of the articles.
So don't forget, we have the two, so you have a.
A zoning and AKP.
Yeah, two's, two zoning, right, two medical marijuana, no, I'm sorry, no, just one, no, two.
Two, there are two.
Two.
You got a turf field placeholder here anyway.
Oh, did you vote to close the warrant?
No, we did not.
Is there anything else you want to put on the warrant?
No, I just don't want to get, go home and not have you close the warrant.
I move to close the warrant.
Motion's made?
Seconded.
And seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it, warrant's closed again. Alright, so the election, how, we are routine through seven, as you, you know. Actually.
Nine, throw nine in there too.
Do we want to do those, or do we want to move those to after the juicy stuff?
They're boilerplates, they just, we should whip through those, I would think.
Number the budget, so, I mean, number the warrant, so I gave you.
Twelve, ten, eleven, right?
Gave you the warrant. Don't forget, we have some capital ones at the.
The end.
At the end, I want to move up.
So we're changing nothing through one through nine, right?
Well, let's see if, do we want to move the capitals right after the budget? Budget is five, right? Yeah, budget's five, water's six, so five and six, we are really stuck, seven's the committee appointments.
There will be a report there.
From which committee?
Well, actually, it will, if you can defer that for a moment, while we go through this, I'll tell you about a meeting that Jack and I had this week.
Okay. The capital articles.
I think, I think your suggestion's a good one, I would do the capitals right after the budget.
Okay, so starting at seven.
Money is money.
Yeah.
So, water is six, is that right?
Water's six.
Okay.
A thirty is now seven, A thirty-one, eight. Are you gonna have debt and free cash capital?
Um, I, yeah, I, I guess.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's nine then?
Nine, yep.
Nine, ten, eleven will be the King Philip all-in one.
Yep.
And then, okay, so we don't need A thirty-five anymore.
Correct.
A thirty-four is the all-in, so we're up to, oh, eleven. So do we want to do committee reports and, and another lull for four or five articles, and then get into the beef?
Yeah, I would do the committee report next.
Yeah, I, I think we could do, knock off those, the next five, I think, are boilerplate.
So seven becomes twelve.
Thirteen is eight.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen's pretty easy.
Fifteen, sixteen.
So ten is fifteen?
Ten becomes fifteen.
Ten is fifteen, yep.
Twelve is, well, eleven, sixteen, twelve, seventeen, thirteen, eighteen.
You could do seventeen.
Fourteen, nineteen, yep, okay, alright.
Right, thirteen is eighteen?
Yes, thirteen's eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay, fourteen is nineteen?
Nineteen, yep.
Okay.
Now you get into the fun ones.
Yep.
Does the energy committee want to go before the, I mean, the one that everybody's gonna be there for, or a lot of people are gonna be there for, is gonna be Jay and Paul's.
Well, it's gonna be in the petition.
In the petition one.
In the petition, so, and you don't want to do those too late, but, so I would move those up.
You should do this in pencil.
Thank you.
I would do community preservation petition and then stretch code.
I'd do stretch code, community preservation and petition, because no one's hanging on for stretch. I think it's important, one that people should talk about, but if we have a bloody fight about Jay and Paul's and/or a bloody fight about the petitions, then everyone just walks out, and the same four people vote on stretch as vote on everything else, that'd be my preference.
I'd rather see more people vote on it, if they really want stretch, I mean, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but.
It's because I haven't got my hooks in yet.
Yeah, no, that's fine, you can, you can help the people decide what they want. You kind of keep them there, that's nice, I mean, the rest of it's.
That's fine.
That's twenty?
Twenty.
Fifteen is twenty.
Yep, yep.
Fifteen is twenty?
Fifteen is twenty. And then we.
I would go, I would go to CPC.
Then, okay.
Which one, right to the Jay and Paul's one?
Well, you, I mean, the, the, you know, the other ones aren't gonna be heavy lifting, so if you.
It'll give you a little break.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, nineteen becomes twenty-one.
Yep.
Twenty becomes twenty-two.
Yep.
Twenty becomes twenty-two.
Twenty-three, twenty-one becomes twenty-three.
Yep, almost caught up.
Twenty-two becomes twenty-four, twenty-three becomes twenty-five, and then twenty-four becomes twenty-six, that's Jay and Paul's.
Yep, then you gotta go to petitions.
Then you go right into petitions.
So then you go to twenty-seven, so twenty-five is twenty-seven.
Yep, twenty-six is twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight, thirty.
Twenty-eight, thirty.
And then twenty-nine, thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Okay, and then we go back to.
We have a lot left, yeah.
Sixteen is thirty-two.
Sixteen is thirty-two, that's the end of the main one?
Thirty-three and thirty-four.
Oh, and we, we gotta do uh, medical marijuana. Do we want to do those right after petition? Or do we do those at the very end?
I think, you know, I think we can do it thirty-five.
I agree. It is not gonna be a heavy lifting one.
Thirty-five's medical marijuana.
Okay. What, what, because what's thirty-three, seventeen?
Yeah.
Yes.
And eighteen is thirty-four.
Okay, the fire chief, okay, that's, that's capital, okay. And it's not capital, okay, so number thirty-five is med- marijuana.
You got that?
Got it.
We have ordered.
I'll run these by Jonathan and uh-
Little inside joke. He spent hours going over that.
Well, I like that we can do it faster. Now, of course, people may come and want to bump things up and-
That's the prerogative of freedom of action.
And I'll sit in my seat-
It's the prerogative of moderator.
Well, yeah.
Whether he wants to move an article.
Still looking for candidates for King Philip School Committee, that's the only elected office that we do not have a candidate for, so. Anybody's interested in being on the King Philip School Committee?
I move we write in Rob Garrity? I don't have a second though, okay?
Second.
There you go.
All's in favor? Stickers for everybody.
You write whatever you want.
I will have stickers from Rob Garrity for people to pick up on elections.
I think uh, Superintendent Liz would come after you with a large knife. Um, are they televised meetings?
What's that?
Yeah, the King Philip one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I would miss my audience.
Yeah.
They would miss you.
I may come to be in the audience one occasionally.
What do you mean, come to be, we can fully expect it.
Yeah. Alright. Um, according to my uh, math, we're done with everything except
How about minutes?
Our executive session.
Well, we have, I think we should advise, we should update you on a meeting that we had.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, I had a couple miscellaneous things here.
You want to go first, with the miscellaneous?
Sure. One of them is that meeting, but uh, I met with uh, members of Fort Bragg Sea Squadron, and they are coming to do some training at Southwood in August. Um, and they did this a couple of years ago, although a couple of years ago, they brought some uh, I think Apache helicopters and, and some pretty impressive uh, equipment. This year, they're, they're not, uh, they're, they're just gonna bring foot soldiers and uh, they're gonna do some hostage rescue, uh, some reconnaissance. They may end up having so, a couple of small helicopters, uh, but nothing that will be as impressive as the last time. Um, so we will do a reverse nine-one-one, they're, they're scheduled to do this in late August, so it's still a ways away, but uh, they did want to give us a heads up. And Chuck, Chuck Chief Stone, met with them as long, along with me. And, you know, we talked about, um, we went through some calendars and uh, compared some of the Foxborough events, uh, because Country Fest is during that week too, so we are avoiding those dates.
And where they do this, I'm sorry, check, you said earlier?
It's, where?
Where?
At Southwood, and then actually at the, they're gonna go over, they're gonna leave there and then go over to the Franklin High School, the, the old school and, and like, you know, help tear it down. They're gonna do some sniper training, so there will be a perimeter around the, around the property, um, of army officers, um, you know, and they'll keep people out of the property. So that, you know, that'll be kind of-
Nobody gets shot.
Are they using live rounds when they do the sniper training, do you know?
Usually.
I think they probably will, yeah. In, in some of the other, the rescue situations and stuff, they, you know, they'll use actually paintballs and other type situation, uh, you know, non-lethal. But for the sniper, they'll, they'll actually will use live ammo. We did have the uh, roundtable last week.
They could be helpful at Country Fest, actually.
We had a roundtable last week for uh, the, the plaza, potential the Plaza development on uh, the Buckley Mann property. Um, there's gonna be a follow-up meeting, I think it's scheduled for the next Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, but I gotta check my notes. So we're gonna have a breakout group, uh, some of the committees have sent me their volunteers, um, so again, if you guys want to attend that, uh-
Next Thursday?
Yeah, I gotta double check my notes, but I think that's the, that's when we're doing it.
Twenty-seventh?
Yep. Um, it was a good meeting, you know, he, he presented, it was very high level, he, he talked about different, uh, he's got a, you know, a hundred acres or so that he's gonna try and develop, he talked about, um, you know, conventional subdivision versus uh, opportunities to use the land, you know, to, to condense his uh, his buildup and then use the land for some other town uh, possibilities, either open space, uh, a water source, uh, recreation purposes. So, it was just kind of the introductions at that meeting and very limited discussion. He did send over a plan that has some of the uh, uh, wetland delineations, so it's, we can have more of a intelligent conversation about the, the actual use of the land. So, that was good. And then Jim and I met with George Vallone from Hoboken Properties, um, the, and he says the purchase and sale is now imminent. Um, I think it's about eighteen, eighteen months or so to, to sign that purchase and sale. Um, so he said other than a little medical thing going on, his family, they would have signed it last week, so, um, they're, he's, but he's got two years to close on the property, they're going through title uh, search processing now. They have until February of two thousand and fifteen to, to um, address any zoning challenges that they have. Uh, he's got six months to do some environmental work. He also knows that he has to go through the legislature to get some, there's a restriction that the property has to be used for a hospital. Um, so he's gotta go through that process as well. And then uh, uh, he, he was hoping to get on the May town meeting, uh, when it came to us. Was it yesterday or two days ago? And uh-
It meant Monday.
Yeah, we both told him that it was, it just not feasible at this point. But we- Yeah. So I don't know if you want to talk about more about, you know, the discussion about the use of the property.
Well, it was, it was a good mea-, it was a listening meeting. And um, he was very forthcoming and wasn't asking for anything, he was looking for guidance more than anything else. And um, that's why I said it referenced one of those articles, he was looking for ways that um, he could communicate with the town. Which is a good thing. And he wasn't, I, I think he would have liked May, but he didn't push for May. You know, he was very, he understood that wasn't gonna happen. And he was very direct about, I, I, some of the comments he made, I, Jack, you jump in on me if I don't have them right, but you know, he said, look, if, if the town doesn't want it, I need to know that. You know, because he's, he hasn't got any money at stake here until I think February.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
Oh, next February?
Correct, a week, a year from this February. That's, because he has till then to work out the zoning under the purchase and sale, he has benchmarks throughout the process, and that's when I think where money started to exchange hands, so, um, which is a fair timing. I mean, that, that is a fair opportunity, but, so he wants to know, you know, he said, look, if it's not something the town doesn't want, I need to know it and I move on. So he, he wasn't-
He wasn't trying to-
He wasn't trying to sell anything, I mean, there was no, no, he was, he's still talking about the project that uh, he presented to us that day with the little annex apartment, if you will. He's talking about uh, what am I, I don't want to say extended care, what am I-
Assisted living.
Assisted living, thank you, he was talking about assisted living facility, I mean, it, it was all a brainstorming, you know, off-the-cuff kind of thought process, but he's, he's obviously done a lot of work on this. And he's out getting the investors lined up to do this and he'd like to go forward with it. So, one of the suggestions we, we gave him was, I said, well, we mentioned the roundtable that we just had.
Right.
Thought it would be a good idea to have another roundtable, but we suggested he wait till mid-May to do that. Um, we got too much going on in April and with the town meeting, and let's get through that. Um, and he was fine with that. But I did mention to him, we did ask about town meeting and would there be an opportunity to give a brief overview? And I said, well, there's an opportunity for a discussion, if you will, at town meeting, I said, I'll bring it up to the board and see whether or not they want to entertain that. Giving him an opportunity to town meeting, he's looking for a way to get in front of as many people as he can. And we, we didn't commit one way or the other.
Yeah, I thought it was an intro, you know, if you think about it as a kind of a sales pitch for the fall town meeting to try and get people interested in the zoning discussion for the fall town meeting. You know, the, his presentation that he gave to us uh, in the past is on, you know, the town administrator page of the, of the town's website, so if people want to go look at that and refresh their memories, or if they haven't seen it, go see it for the first time.
But, but we suggested he, if he's gonna do that, that he talk more specifically about the plans that he has for this project. The, the presentation he made last time was uh, sort of a commercial for his business and what they've done in New Jersey and other locations and you know, that's a, that's a, that's a nice stage setter, if you will, but I think people are gonna be more interested in saying, alright, Southwood, you know, what, what does it mean? We mentioned to him about the issue around water. Um, he, he was aware of that, um, he, he knows that uh, Walpole has septic and, you know, wondered whether or not there's a way he can work something out with Walpole to do water and septic as well. You know, if he doesn't do that, he's gonna have to have a treatment plan. I mean, that's, that's a statement of the obvious.
They have MWR, sewer.
Yeah, it, it was, it was a very good give and take kind of conversation with just, okay, you know, what steps do I need to look at and so on? So I think the two things that came out of that short term were possibility of saying something at town meeting and setting up a roundtable after town meeting. Sort of the short version of about a two-hour meeting. But I, I, I think both Jack and I left the meeting, I'm not sure pleased is the right word, but I mean, you know, there was nothing, it, it wasn't a sales pitch. It, it wasn't, you know, I want to get this done, you know, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, it wasn't at all like that. It was informative.
And it wasn't a threat.
Not in the least.
Yep.
Not in the least. And uh, you know, he's asking, as any good businessman would, he's asking very good questions, you know, like, if this is something isn't gonna fly, I need to know it.
Right.
You know? He'll move on.
More useful for him, I mean, you know, three minutes at town meeting, because we don't want to bog down in the middle of this, but have him in the lobby with, you know, a little display kind of thing, he can give out handouts.
He could do that.
Talk to him.
It's almost like an exhibit booth in this case, but I think people like that, because you know, he might, I think he got a lot, potentially got a lot of questions there.
Would you want, would you maybe want to do both?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if he had five minutes to make a quick pitch about, you know, this is, this is what we're considering.
I think, I think people would engage.
And then he had some, yeah, that's a good idea. And he had something outside.
He's willing to do that, yeah.
And it would help us, you know, people will come up to the selectmen afterwards, you know, either loving it or hating it, and it will help us-
And that's okay.
Say, okay, we'll take part in these meetings.
Yeah, absolutely, take part in the process.
Yeah, give me your name, you're signing up for the roundtable, thank you.
You just signed up for the roundtable.
We need somebody on that committee.
Thank you, you're on the roundtable committee.
But, you know, it's, it would clearly be the largest project the town's ever had. And uh, and we talked a lot about the schools, uh, enrollment numbers, things of that nature. Again, not judging, no, no judgment in any of the conversation, just informational. So it, it's, he called, I think he called me on Saturday, he was in town because his wife unfortunately was in the hospital. So he was here, so he asked if we could meet, and I said, sure, but, you know, I'd like to have a second party there, so.
Social protection sanity.
Yeah.
So, so we met, we met in Ja-, we met in Jack's office Monday morning. Um, and, and unfortunately, his wife has been quite ill and we certainly wish her good fortune here.
Okay, well, that sounds like it makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to me too, yeah, it, I think it should make sense to him too. I always have him in that kind of-
So, presentation. Logistically, how will he be able to speak, he's not a town committee?
We could sponsor it as a board of selectmen.
For the economy.
We think it's an informational item, that the town, it's an opportunity for people that are there, it's on TV. We're always looking for ways to get information out to people. It's just purely informational, that this, this is in the conversation stages and we'd like the folks to be aware of it.
That reminds me of something. So, under the town bylaws, we're supposed to have this moderator meeting before town meeting. Okay. Who's the moderator?
You still have one.
I know technically CC is still moderator. So, you're gonna have a meeting with-
We can have three people in to run it.
I know.
Needs to get a third in the town. Someone to moderate the moderator.
We'll have three options for town meeting.
Well, actually, you will have three very different town meetings.
You could, yeah. So, I, that's-
CC is, is still our moderator.
Right. Although it just seems absurd to have her, you know, setting up the schedule of the next town meeting.
It does.
Because town meetings are supposed to be these organic things.
And she won't be here to moderate.
I still, I still wonder why our elections are before our town meeting in general.
We talked about that, I first kind of wanted to change it.
We did, we've talked about that, I mean, it's a, you know, a selectman.
Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He ends up up at the table and had nothing to do with creating the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, and um, I, I spoke into a former selectman about that. Who used to share that view, and now his point of view is, well, the town meeting, you know, ch- going back to colonial times, town meeting chose selectmen.
He goes back that far.
Chose selectmen, they are selected to carry out the will of town meeting throughout the year. So by the time new town meeting gets around, they're done, they've carried out the will of town meeting throughout the year. Which is fine if, you know, you're dealing with sixteen forties governance, but we're not anymore, so I think it really is kind of,
It's a nice backwards conversation, but not practical.
Then why don't we change it then? You know, we have to get the town, you know, change it, you know.
Bylaw change.
Have to be a bylaw change.
I should do it, executive order.
You didn't, you haven't done with, are you part of-
You haven't done an executive order in a while.
This would be number three?
For Garrity, this is your chance.
You, you have set a record, I think, for a select, for a chairman, in the number of executive orders you've had.
It's a lot of research, nice in concept and theory, but sometimes you gotta get things done.
That's right. Dictatorship works.
So we, we will have agreed, we'll give them five minutes, assuming we can get one of the moderators to agree to that. And, and we'll do a roundtable sometime, as we discussed.
In May.
After, after the meeting, so, mid, end of May.
Yep, and then, and then he can set up in the lobby if he wants.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Encourage him to. Alright. Anything else?
Just uh, acceptance of minutes.
Uh, I have read the minutes, I move to accept the regular minutes of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, and March third, two thousand and fourteen, regular and executive session.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
And then, do you want to consider the TV?
Uh, just one more. I, I did meet as the liaison to the Norfrey Schools with the superintendent. And went through her budget extensively with her. Just as an aside, I, I, I think she's done a great job personally on, on that budget. I think her recommendations are very reasonable. She understands, She understands, she's got a good handle on, on both her needs as well as the financials associated with the town, so, uh, I left there feeling very comfortable about her budget.
Good. Well, that's good to know. Uh, this has been a...
Wish I could say the same.
Ah!
You're on, you're on your own.
Oh, you mean for your school that you are...
Yeah, so, liaising too, yeah.
Yes.
That's right.
I don't know. I think I got the short end.
The only, the only wildcard in their budget is in there in the middle of negotiations. And so she's, she's got a, well, she's, you know, I, those have not been off the wall lately, so I, I, she's got a placeholder in there that may be within a half or a 1% differential. Other than that, I think, they're pretty much done.
That's good. Is, um, Scott, is Bob Dunn over there?
What is he?
Oh, and, and just, just as an aside, she's, she's got one item in her budget that if the negotiations, if the considerations associated with that are in excess of the placeholder, she would eliminate that item. So either, either way.
She doesn't need that anymore.
Well, it's, no, it's, 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 it's one she needs, but she understands that there's a, a cap, so to speak.
All right. So Bob's not available to talk about this.
There is one, I do have one other minor thing, sorry.
We'll keep this going. He'll be available.
The last thing.
You're stalling at this point.
Well, you, you brought up the elementary school superintendent, and she gave me a list of, uh, building project items that she would like the school building committee to consider as we close out the project here. And there's actually some debate. The project manager says it's too late and MSBA won't allow them, so we may have to do it through another process anyway. But there are num, there are eight things on our list, three of which I have prices for. Room darkening shades for the cafeteria, they have a video presentation in there, and then they've got that big wall of glass, and it's very difficult to have video presentations in there with the, the wall of glass.
Do you have a price for those?
Um, I think it's probably twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, at least. It's expensive.
Yeah. Um, and so these are things that she's just throwing out, and we'll, and the, the concern, well, let me go through them.
Do they have a performance space to do presentations in?
No, not at...
Oh, the cafeteria has the stage. Okay.
Um, a mounted screen for the gymnasium, so when they have functions like Veterans Day, because that's actually a bigger place to have all the kids. Uh, the, the cafeteria doesn't hold all the kids, but if they have Veterans Day, they go into the cafeteria and they have kids sitting on the floor.
And they were showing it on the wall at the last Veterans Day.
So they'd like to show, they'd like to put a screen on the gymnasium floor, I mean, on the gymnasium wall. Um, shade cover and picnic tables for the courtyard, they've got that cement area out, uh, that they'd like, you know, that was cut, these are all things that were cut from the budget early in the process. Um, a sign for the, for the access road, got to work on the location of that, um, with one or the other neighbor. Uh, that's probably about nineteen thousand.
Per sign?
Yep.
We talked about this.
We did.
When we did it, we talked about, and it was assured, oh yeah, we can do this, we'll do it in stone, or blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, we, but we never put it back into the, we never put it back into the budget because we were waiting, we've had a horrible time when, I'm going to say, just the project manager and the MSBA getting them to finalize, and, you know, the MSBA not approving some of our budget transfers, so we don't know how much money's getting freed up.
I have seen those emails.
Yeah, so some of the things have gotten rejected.
Is this JLA? Is that the project manager? Okay.
Yeah. Not my favorite. Um, so, posts, these are, this is a very small item, but posts for the bus loop gates, we've got new, we've got bus loops that you swing them open and there's no place to secure the, the gate when it's open, so the thing just kind of swings free.
Gets the bus somewhere.
Um, that seems like a basic thing.
Uh, install a hundred bulletin boards in the classrooms. It's eight thousand dollars. And then, uh, fixed amount projector for the cafeteria. Um, they've got, they just wheel it on the cart now. They'd like to secure it to the ceiling, so it's out of the way. So these are things that they would like to go to the school building committee to talk about.
How much money is left?
Somewhere between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand.
And the total of those items?
Somewhere between a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand.
Rough guess.
Thirty, fifty, sixty.
I think it's more.
Uh, I, I think it's less than a hundred thousand, but it's...
Total?
Yeah. I mean, well, the shade, I don't know about the shade cover.
You said the shades were eighty grand.
Shade cover, yeah, the shade cover could be a lot. You're right.
Yeah, we, we looked at shades for a room with something along lines of nine windows that were, well, they were twenty feet high probably, and it was eighty-five thousand dollars or...
Yeah, I think, she said that was probably going to be thirty to forty thousand, I think, in the...
I think...
Well, a, a couple of things. I mean, the, the post for the gate, that, that's a no-brainer.
Good God.
I mean, you know, first, I can't believe it didn't get done, but that said, that's, that you have to do.
Yeah.
Um, you don't need picnic tables. Nice to have, but you don't need them.
They can maybe get donated someday from, you know, different organizations, maybe they can do a little fundraising.
I mean, I, I have, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'm conflicted with, we, we, if it's something that you've got to have, then you have to do it. But if it's a nice to have, we made a commitment that if we had monies left over for this project, we were going to return them to the taxpayer. And just because there's something sitting in the bank account, I, I'm principled on this. I don't think we should spend it. Now, posts to hold a gate open, that's, you got to do that, but, um, and I'm a little, I understand, you know, I mean, they built floor-to-ceiling windows, which makes you wonder in its own right, but that said, um, I, I don't want to spend what we don't have to spend. So if they're nice to halves, I would say no. If, if they're got to have critical things, then I would say yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the school building committee has been, I would say, they've been pretty tough on, on the school, you know, being able to spend things, and, uh...
Well, that's their job.
No, I know. Uh, uh, no, and I'm, so I'm, I'm not saying that, because the school building committee hasn't considered these yet, so they, they may say no, because they, you know, they're all taxpayers and they, they agree with you.
Well, there's not, it's not for us to decide.
Well...
Technically, it is.
Yeah, no, but, but I think we sent them a message a year ago saying what you guys just said, you know, don't, don't spend anything that you don't have to. Um, you know, I think Ingrid, Ingrid's point was, you know, things like, especially like the room darkening shades for the cafeteria, um, it's certainly not something they have to have, but if they really want to use that room as someplace where they can, um, get it dark and either put on a presentation or have people up on the stage and have the right atmosphere, it would be a really, really nice to have. I mean, you know, it's...
I have a suggestion.
Hmm?
They're closer to this than we are. I mean, they've been through the whole process. Why don't, why doesn't the committee that you're serving on weigh through these issues and come back with a recommendation?
Okay. And then we can say no.
Then we can say no.
So make them do all that work, so we, yeah.
Well, well, but they're...
They are closer to it.
They're closer to it. You know, they've been, you know, there may be a reason why they cut something out of here earlier that we don't know about.
Right. Seems to me like the gym screen and room darkening shades almost add up to an either-or.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think, you know, I, I'm not saying I would vote for all of these things, so...
And the suspended thing?
It's a nice to have.
It's a nice to have.
That's a nice to have.
Okay. All right, so...
You got to work right. You got to rewire the wall.
The only, the only problem that I'm kind of running into, and this is, I can push back on the project manager, is he's really pushing us to try and close out this project. I mean, we haven't met for two months, um, so it's...
That's tough.
But this, this, you know, this is a, a one discussion item done, one and done discussion.
No, but then to come back to you guys and then, and then go back to this building committee, uh, I'm just...
I, you know, I don't want to micromanage this. I mean, if...
If you want to tell, my preference would be to, why don't we tell the school building committee to be as conservative as they can be within reason?
Well, using, I mean, I'll throw out, using the guideline has simply said that it's, it's, you got to have it. Posts for the gates, you got to have it. Nice to have? No. I mean, the fact that the projector's on a cart versus hanging from the ceiling, that's a nice to have to me.
I'm almost even not convinced about the access road sign, frankly, especially when it's twenty thousand dollars.
I have mixed feelings about that. I mean, I know there's a lot of, you know, after school, there's a lot of rec athletics, or, you know, the youth soccer athletics that are...
People from out of town.
People from other towns are coming, and so it's not really so much for the school as it is for the...
No, it's, people don't live in Noah Park. I guess, I didn't, that part...
But we, we don't have the land to put a sign there.
I, I, I'm skeptical about that. I mean, obviously, we're not going to, we're going to check that.
I don't want to pay for that.
We're not doing a taking for a sign.
Right. Nor, nor a trade.
How much is one of those posts, you know, the white posts that, that side you'd write in, "School this way"?
I'll take your feedback to the school building committee.
Thank you. That would be appreciated. We are so tight we squeak. All right.
Well, what do we do about this monitor thing? I don't want, I mean, I know Bob needs a decision, so, um...
I see your point. I do. But as a person with great experience at tilting at windmills...
I was told you constructed them. I didn't tell you.
And then I tilt them.
Well, you remember those town meetings when you spent about an hour talking about a thousand dollar item and you...
I know, I know. I, I understand.
That's going through my head right now.
But with, with me, it's just, I, I just, I find the fee schedule not rational and doesn't make sense to me. And I, I just, you know, we're charging citizens. I, I don't want to lose money, but this one just is illogical to me.
But again, though, we, we are, we did, whether we saw it or not, all we're doing is updating it from an illogical fee to our, so are you saying you want to revisit the whole...
Well, I'm, I, I just never saw it. I, I don't, maybe I, you know, maybe I fell asleep during that discussion. I mean, I don't think I did. I just don't ever remember seeing this fee schedule.
Cisco 2011, last time we did, so we're talking three years ago anyway.
But I usually remember these things.
Flat screens weren't so prevalent three years ago.
Yeah, well, true. Um, I mean, it's not worth a crusade, I, I, but I, I think that the fees should be fair. They should be posted, and they, they should be logical. And the posted part we can do. These, to me, are not fair or logical.
There's really no reason we have to vote these today, Jack.
Sure the world won't end, no.
Really? What?
Well, Bob's not here, but he did indicate that it was...
Can we not join the consortium if we don't vote?
Are you saying that the consortium can't go forward if we don't vote it?
Forward if you don't vote.
Oh, that's please.
I mean, because he, because he just says to cover our costs, not that I want the town to lose, you know, eat the cost, but all it's saying is that we can recover some of his costs, right, so it could...
Well, but another question, when you say they can't go forward, it, what happens if we change the fee schedule?
I don't know the answer to that.
Does that throw the whole thing out?
Um, I would like to have the DPW commissioner come in next time we meet and talk about this, and, and to allay our, assuage our concerns. I'm pretty sure there's not going to be a solid waste pickup from the Kuntruorsham from Norfolk, and if it is, does, we'll eat the two dollars per, you know, twenty-one inch TV.
Because we can still live with the fiscal 2014 fees.
Well, the existing fee schedule's in place.
Exactly.
The consortium...
But don't approve it for the next two weeks.
No, 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 uh-uh. You trying to catch us, and then we won't do it, and then, nope. Not, not fooling that one. So, all right.
Well, we have an executive session. If Bob gets out, we could come back into public session and deal with it.
I can't believe he's talking about that one.
You in a hurry to leave?
Um, we can't do a conditional executive, we have to, at the beginning, say whether or not we're coming back in full session.
You can say, you're coming back.
Yeah, come back, and then we can adjourn it. Say we're coming back.
We can come back, and then adjourn.
All right, and we can adjourn if we come, if he's not available, we're adjourned.
He's going to check one more time.
So who seems to want these fees? Who must have something she wants to get rid of.
Bob, Bob knows why we want them, so he's planning on staying with the planning board until 10:30.
You just made it...
I don't understand either. Why? It's a critical...
That we were, we were holding up thirteen other...
When is our next meeting?
Well...
And it, it was, it was inadvertently attached in your sign folders, in your mail folder, just another article, piece of paper. So...
However, if it's a vote we need to take, it should be on the open meeting, on the posted meeting thing. So there is a question as to whether or not we can even vote this tonight, and we would face an open meeting law violation, which they're taking very seriously these days.
As they should.
But if we did follow the open meeting law procedures, because it was, because of a clerical error, there was an administrative person on vacation, I'd say that's her fault, but something was put on her desk, and it got pushed to the outside. So, the chairman was not notified of the agenda items, so that's why it wasn't on the agenda. But as soon as we found out about the item, which was today, we added it to the agenda and added it to the public place so that if people were here, they would be aware of the item. So we did follow the open meeting laws.
All right. Um, are you willing to come back?
Absolutely.
Ever so briefly?
Yes, I'll come back as long as it takes.
Absolutely.
All right.
Good to have.
Uh, I move that we move into executive session for purposes of, uh, negotiation with respect to collective bargaining as an open meeting may, will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Irony. Um, and this is in preparation of two contract negotiations. So, this has to be a roll call vote?
And we will return to public.
And we will return to public session at the end.
Scott, I'm aye.
Rob Garrity, aye.
Jim Lee, aye.
Jim Lee, aye. Okay, we are now in executive session. We will pause while the video. Good evening. We're back from executive session, talking with Bob McGee, our DPW head, about his proposal for the cost of electronic...
Who deeply regrets joining our meeting.
He wishes he was back and playing more of being dripped with hot oil. So, we have a concern about the, the fee schedule here, and it doesn't seem to, I, I was probably set up at one point to reflect weight. Now with the advent of the thin-screen T, you know, monitors and TVs, you can have a thin-screen thirty-inch TV which weighs less than a twenty-two-inch old television.
Right.
So...
I, I think there lies the answer is, I think it's the difference between a monitor, which is the thin-screen, and I'm saying I think. I, I might have to go back if this doesn't satisfy the answer. But I think what we're trying to do is, it is weight, and because television's way more, they have the old cathode ray tube.
That's not the question. If, if you've got, I have, in my basement, a computer monitor.
Right.
It's, it's a twelve-inch computer monitor. It's been down there for, since 1941. Um, it's, it's heavy, you know, because it's the old one. It goes out like that, you know, one of the old ones.
Yeah.
They used it on the Apollo mission. And you play Paul on it.
He, he's been drinking heavily before he came to meeting, so please ignore him. Um, and, I, I, two issues that I have.
Right.
So, and I've got another monitor, shows you I got to get this stuff down in the landfill, uh, that's probably a twenty-three inch, that I'll be, that weighs one-tenth the amount of the twelve-inch. Both broken, both don't work.
Because it's an LCD.
Because it's an LCD, it's a flat screen.
Versus a CRT.
Versus the old chunky one.
That's what the question should be. CRTs, LCDs.
Right. And so I'm, I'm saying, why, why are you charging me thirteen bucks or, or more, actually in that case, for a flat screen if it's by weight when it weighs one-tenth of what the twelve-inch does? It's illogical to me. And the other thing is, is who's going to measure these, Bob? I mean, you, you go from a seventeen inch to an eighteen inch to a nineteen inch, you're going to go nuts with a tape measure. It, it just is illogical to me.
Right. There's, um, it's...
Including the casing?
I can't answer. It's a detail, it's a detail that I can't answer right now. I'm not sure if they're taking them. From what I understand too, is, uh, tell you how far from it I am, and I, maybe I shouldn't be, but it's, I think they measure it diagonally too.
Right. They're all measured diagonally.
So maybe, he does take out a tape, and he does, he does do that, and he does take into the consideration. But for the purpose of reading something and trying to understand it, this may be difficult, and it may be worthy of better, better explanation than I'm doing right now.
But the fee is supposed to be by weight, right, in theory?
Pretty sure. Pretty sure it is.
So, so it seems to me there's a, I mean, we were talking about the TVs. You got flat-screen TVs now that break, that, that people are going to get rid of, and then, you know, you could have, Rob's got, I, I got one down the Cape. It's a thirty-three inch Sony that I still use down the Cape.
Right.
The thing, I need two people to move it.
You got a twenty-seven inch TV like that.
You know, it's, so...
Well, take a thousand TVs. Um, is yours that you have in the basement, which it seems like you, you're using an example, is that common? Is that coming into our dump all the time, or is it really so outdated that it's the exception to the rule? Because I'm sure there's some discretion in the field there. We do things, Jim, uh, we weigh so many things. We weigh every single thing by eye. We don't have a scale.
I know.
We never use a scale, and I think it's to the benefit of the, of the...
But, but you're not doing this, I mean, if I brought you in my twelve-inch monitor, you're going to charge me six bucks.
Yeah, I mean, just even just...
Because that's what it says.
Always gotta have, Bob, I mean, just for an inch of computer monitor size, inch, it's five dollars more, is that, I mean, is that because you presume it weighs so much more?
You're gonna, you're gonna charge me twelve bucks.
It says three dollars more.
And I can guarantee you the eighteen to twenty-ones are LCD monitors. No one has a twenty-one inch.
I've never seen an eighteen inch TV, by the way, of the old, they're either nineteen or seventeen.
Yeah, from that seventeen to this eighteen.
Yeah. Again, it's all stuff.
So, these twenty-ones are gonna be less weight than the sixties. So, here's, here's the question, Bob. It was relayed to us by our staff here that, that if we don't vote this tonight, the universe ends, and we can't join the consortium and we're gonna have to-
Universe is a solar systems.
We are gonna have to pull apart these monitors on our own and separate them and, and send the bad stuff to Nigeria, or could we-
It's kind of like a white lie, I guess. Yeah, I, I try to push things in because there is thirteen other communities, I mean, communities that enter into the hazardous waste consortium and so forth, and everybody's gotta get their answers in and, or any price changes.
And is it one fee across the board for everybody?
No, it's what your host fee-
So, we can charge anything we want?
Oh.
If we were to say to you, we want all monitors to be eight bucks, does that mean you can't go in the consortium?
No, well, then you gotta go to the philosophy of what we try to operate here as a, a wash, like an enterprise account.
I, I understand, I'm, I'm just asking you, we, we don't have to mirror what the other twelve towns do.
No, whatever they get for disposal fees is what they need to answer to, and so we, what we try to do is get the best price in time.
And that answers that question.
Right, and give people a good rate, a reasonable fee, and just cover our costs.
So, why, why couldn't we come up with a, a pay system that fits what the issue is, which is, which is weight?
CRTs versus LEDs versus-
It could be, it could be just in the format, in the presentation, and don't worry about, if, if, if you've heard this now and, and I can get the answer, you know, answer you intelligently, and maybe it's a, maybe it will take just rewording this so it's more specific.
Well, for example-
It'd be easier to vote on.
I, I'm sorry to, you know, this sounds like arguing about the streetlight being off at three o'clock versus two o'clock, you know, and, and it's not a big deal, but